Look, I'm gonna need your help a little bit more today because my voice is on and off. Okay?
You got it.
And I have to get ready for a bunch of Annapolis meetings next week, right? Okay, so I like to call the meeting to order today, the first meeting of the 2024 year. With the call of order, Luke Cheswick.
Here.
Jerystoffis.
I'm here.
Valerie Woodall.
Yeah.
Danielle Carr. All right, we have a full courtroom. Luke Vice Mayor, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Yep. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We're gonna move on to number two, review of the agenda. Can you go ahead and give us a read through, please, Luke?
Yep. The agenda for the legislative meeting of mayor and council, Tuesday, January 2nd. It's a virtual meeting, one call to order pledge of allegiance, two review of the agenda, three mayor and council member event announcements, four presentation and discussion on building applications for thirty-four twenty-three Newton Street and thirty-eight fifteen twenty thirty-second Street, five public comment, six closed session summary. And then under old business, we will have the second reading and adoption of ordinance number zero eight twenty twenty-three, amending chapter thirteen, traffic of the Mount Rainier City Code to alter certain speed limits on city roads. Under new business, we will have Arbor Day presentation. Mayor Benitez will present a proclamation for Arbor Day Friday, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. And then we will, on number nine, vote for approval of minutes. The mayor and council will vote on approving the minutes. September fifteenth, twenty twenty, September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, October sixth and October twentieth, twenty twenty, November tenth, November seventeenth and November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, December first, eighth and fifteenth, twenty twenty, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, October third, twenty twenty-three, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, and November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. And then ten is adjournment.
Thank you so much, Luke. For the reading of the resolution, I'm also gonna ask you to read this to be prepared for that at the end, okay? And hopefully my voice returns. I have like, you know, good five days to get it back. All right. And so thank you so much. So is there any item you guys wish to delete out of this agenda? We can move forward. All right, seeing that we, I guess we're moving forward. All right, presentation, mayor and council members event announcements. I'm gonna start with you, Luke, and go through word one and then word two. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. The native plant network signs have arrived from the print shop. Thank you, H and W Printing, for getting those printed. So we will have those going out to the residents who are certified, and then we'll have the list going to code compliance as well. So they understand who's on the native plant network for purposes of our city code. And I think that's the only announcement I have. Thank you. Danielle?
Thank you. There is a correction to the CPR first aid class on the city calendar. Please note that this training will be held on Wednesday, January twenty-fourth, from six until eight thirty PM at the Bunker Hill Fire Department, not on Saturday, the twenty-seventh, just a minor detail. The cert will send out a link for signup once it has been sent to them by the Office of Emergency Management. This is a free certification from Mount Rainier residents, and there is no obligation to join the cert if you get certified. On Monday, January fifteenth, it's Martin Luther King Junior Day, and this is usually celebrated as a national day of service. This year, I am challenging residents to a day of neighbors helping neighbors. You could do something as simple as changing a light bulb for an elderly neighbor or help them with a chore that might be difficult for them. Take a neighbor something you baked or invite them over for dinner, walk down your street, visit a park, pick up litter you might see. Visit one of the artists in our community and ask them about their work, offer to buy them a snack from blood or a smoothie from the water hole. If you have kids, encourage them to make him a cards and take them to Rainier Manor, one or two, to give to the seniors who live there. There are so many little things you can do. It's an act of service or random acts of kindness. The idea is to do something that will help make a difference in the life of someone else, which will in turn help build and strengthen our community. Like Dr. King said, life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others? If you have any questions about this challenge, you can email me at decarter@mountreiniermd.org. Thank you.
Go ahead, Valerie Jarrett. Sheva, if you want to go first.
I don't have any events right now. I know that the Gateway CDC is working on Black History Month events coming up, and they will announce that shortly. And the Recreation Committee, I think their next event is the Community Yard Sale in April. So, but that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie Jarrett.
I know events to announce. Thank you.
Okay, can you go to the bottom of the page, Melissa?
Mayor, we don't have any events currently.
All right, that's fine. I think that we announced most of them. And we'll go ahead and announce one, the ones that come in. I do have one announcement, though. This was asked for me. The yard waste collection counter is up in our city website. If you literally type yard waste, waste collection counter twenty twenty-four, it is there. Let me see. So look it up, and it's like for the whole entire year. So if you have a question, a wind recycle, recycling trash, or any of the services the city provides, they are there and available. And let me see the last one. And I just posted because somebody asked me. But on January ninth and twenty-third, that's when they land on Tuesday, that's when the Christmas trees will be picked up. Then that has been a wonderful holiday season. So Happy New Year should be us joining us. And those that celebrate New Year's during this time, I know our city is very diverse. New Year's does land for other diverse groups and other days, and we look forward to celebrating that day as well. All right. But then that for me, I just, the legislative session is gonna start in Annapolis this month. So that means it's gonna be a lot of work for the next few months for me. Making sure that we have, we appealed and make our stand strong when it comes to the city, you know, so you have you spending a lot of time back and forward. Okay, all right. So we're moving on to the next item, presentations and discussions on building applications. We're gonna do it like next time, if they could both present, and then we'll talk to them in order to narrow this down, okay? So I do have the Director of Code Enforcement here, Alma Ferrufino. First, we're gonna talk about thirty-four twenty-third Newton Street. Alma, can you present us here for that address? And if there is and where could be the conditions change? And if there's anything that Code Department for the city has flagged, or if they need a variance?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, City Manager. Thank you for having me here. Today, we have presentation on two properties. The first one is thirty-four twenty-three Newton Street. It's if you remember, I think it's a vacant property that has been vacant for a while and gladly happy to say that Ms. Sarah Dith has taken over and is ready to start fixing the property and making it her own. And helping and assisting is our friend Nathan Sarah Dith, and he'll be doing the presentation today.
Thank you so much. Welcome, Nathan.
Thank you very much for seeing us. Sorry for the delay there. I had to get a cat out of the way. It's, we are very happy to be picking up this house in its hundredth year of existence and giving it pretty close to a top to bottom redo. It's not, it's not a gut renovation, but in the two to three years that it was vacant, the copper pipes were looted and it had been squatted in. And that's, then there was also just the neglect of those years and the fact that the previous owners had 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 a lot of neglect. So the goal is to bring this up, make it, make this a beautiful home for my mom to live within walking distance of me and make it a great house for aging in place, which our little one-story bungalows can be without much work. We're trying to do that with as little intervention as possible, both for cost reasons and because it is a contributing resource to the Mount Rainier Historic District. And so we're not altering the footprint of the building at all. We are only using the spaces already enclosed and just reshaping them a little bit as can be seen between D one oh one, which I think is page eleven of this document, where you can see the two main areas of work and what's being demoed, and A one oh one, which I think is page eight of the presentation. From an architectural and I think permitting perspective, it's, it's pretty straight ahead. We're we're gutting the bathroom out and making it modern and wheelchair accessible. We're moving the laundry upstairs. We're, we're expanding the kitchen because the existing has like a total of thirty inches of, of counter space. Welcome to Mount Rainier, Mom. And and the exterior, if we have budget, at the end of this, we will take down the asphalt siding and restore the teardrop pattern one seventeen wood siding that is underneath that, depending how this, how much this costs us. So that is the plan, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Perfect. Thank you so much. It's a little backward because you definitely know everything we're gonna tell you because you've always been on the other side. So when it comes to keeping the, the house historical, you know what it means to us, and you know what the rules are. So and not just that, you have done also work in the city of Mount Rainier. So aside from being one of our, you know, consultants, you have also done work, and we have admired your beautiful work as well. So I'm gonna start with Luke so he could like read you everything. He reads everybody to make sure it's on the record. And we always bring sure Alma tells you everything she's gonna tell you, but we want to make sure that it's on the record as well. So Luke, go ahead and give your best Brian Neller impression of everything that is needed to be known for this property.
Yeah, this feels, this feels funny telling this to Nathan, but I'm gonna do it anyway. So Nathan, no work before eight AM, no work after eight AM, or we'll get calls from anger constituents. Alma will be able to tell you if there are any trees on the property that need protection. Always be mindful of that, orange fence fencing around those trees, and then be, be mindful of piles of clay and where they're located, because that can cause water runoff onto neighbors' properties and out into the sidewalks. So just make sure if there is any movement of soil, to be mindful of that. But other than that, thank you for doing business in Mount Rainier.
Well, very happy to and very happy to both of us are, are happy to keep this a little modest bungalow and in the neighborhood feel, because these houses are particularly in danger because they're so small. So my mom is very happy to become a Mountie.
Yeah, and welcome to Mount Rainier, Nathan's mom.
Thank you.
She's listening in the back.
Okay, we didn't know that, but welcome. We're happy to have you here. Okay, so I'm gonna go right through council. Remember, we have another property right after this, and we do want to send them home. It is January second. They have other things to do as starting to build this. All right, so we're gonna go to Danielle for word one, and then we're gonna go Jared, Valerie. Go on.
Okay, I think Luke still wanted to say something. Luke, were you good?
I was just gonna say, Newton Street's about to be redone. So it's gonna be improved.
Remember that, you guys, I love you guys to pieces, but you guys cannot give the floor to each other. And if you do that, you, you literally basically, you know, end your time when you do that. Please make sure we follow through, okay? If you have something to add, I could go back in the circle again, but I need you guys to please follow through with it. I don't want this to be as an issue because later on, if we do this now, and later on I call on somebody else and they do this, and I don't see anything, then you guys become very sensitive to each other than trying to keep it fair. All right, so Danielle, please don't do that again. All right. And if Luke needs to go a second round, he knows how to do that as well. He's been with me seven years, seven years in May, Luke. All right, so go on.
Okay, I just wanted to welcome, this is Ms. Cedaroff, to Ward One and Mount Rainier, and I look forward to seeing pictures of the final project. Thanks.
Jared, Valerie?
Yep, no, just echo what Luke said. Nathan, I know is your role on the Legacy Mixed Use Town Center Committee and the Design Review Board, you know, all these rules and all the pieces very well. I just want to thank you for, you and your family for the work that you put towards this house in the city. And yeah, welcome, well, welcome Nathan's mom. Thanks.
Thank you.
She said thank you to you too, Danielle. Just the mic was off.
What's your mom's name, Nathan? Because we could call you Nathan's mom, and I kind of feel a little awkward that we keep doing that.
Yeah, Kay Cedaroff, or Ms. Cedaroff, or probably just Kay.
All right.
Yes, Kay is good.
Perfect. Thank you. Valerie?
Yeah, thank you. I can go what Luke and Jared had said, and Danielle, thank you for coming into the city and reinvesting in our homes and our housing. And welcome, Kay. Thank you.
So Nathan, we're not gonna keep you long. Alma has read you everything. I think everything has been approved. Kate, thank you so much and welcome. And I'm your neighbor, and Nathan for sure knows everybody in that team will be calling. If there's a complaint, he knows every single person that'll be calling as well from that complaint.
Yes, we, we did get a stop work order doing, doing things that were, are pretty much we thought would be okay, but everything had to shut down because one thing wasn't. And, and the neighbors got right on it. So we know.
Yeah, and the other thing is like, it also shows that we're trying to be fair and transparent through everything, you know? So ultimately, that is something that I know you'll be calling us if something will have been done and have not been put in notice as well. All right, so saying that, Nathan and Kate, thank you guys so much, and we look forward to see the final results. And welcome to Mount Rainier. We're very happy to have you here. Okay?
Thanks very much. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year's, okay? You guys don't have to go, but you guys are welcome to like leave. All right, Alma, the next property is
The next property we have presenting is thirty-eight fifteen thirty-second Street. And this one is only doing renovation throughout the basement, but I know it's more cosmetic. The person here presenting is Mr. Kelsey Ryland. I'm pretty sure he's here because I saw him, and he's prepared to give his presentation.
Okay, Mr. Kelsey, are you here? Oh, I see you online. Go ahead.
It's Ms. Kelsey. So yeah, not a whole lot to share. We have half of our basements, you can probably see from the plans, that is currently unfinished, and we'll be adding a bathroom, a bedroom, an office. All within the existing walls of the house, we'll be adding an egress, as you can see, which is really the only exterior work that will be done. I think that's all I really have to say. It's a pretty small project. I'm happy to answer any questions or expand where, where I might need to.
Perfect. And I'm gonna have Luke give you the same speech he just gave Nathan. And the next we're gonna do in combine, Lucas, I know you're becoming a pro at this, but we're gonna have your voice recorded after this. Go on.
Yeah, same thing, no construction starting before eight AM or after eight PM, or we'll get anger calls from neighbors. Doesn't look like you have to do any movement of the soil or protect trees or anything like that. Everything's inside, so you're all good there. And Alma is your best friend in all things code related. She's great, and she's here to, to help everybody who's trying to improve their properties. So thank you for being here and improving your home. And yeah, look forward to seeing you around.
All right, perfect. Council, anything else? So I'm gonna go through you guys. It is seven twenty-one. All right, so we're gonna go since this is in, this is in word one as well, correct? Well, wait, no. So go ahead, Jared, Valerie.
Yep, and I just want to thank you for putting in work, improving your house and this community. And yeah, and echo what Luke said. Thank you very much.
Perfect, Valerie.
Yeah, no, thank you. I echo what Luke and Jared just said, and I hope you enjoy your new basement soon.
Thanks, Danielle.
Yeah, I was gonna, what Valerie said is what I'm thinking. The new improvements, the, the pain of getting through them is one thing, but enjoying the space when it's done. So congratulations.
Thank you. So Kelsey, thank you so much for coming tonight. We're not gonna keep you much. You already heard we need any, if in doubt, I will say reach out to Code and Alma will be like your point person. We look forward to seeing the renovations, and thank you for investing in Mount Rainier. And you know, that also means you're gonna be here a longer time. All right, so happy new year to you as well, and have a good night. Okay? You, bye. Bye. Right, moving on to public comment. Can you move it down to page three, please? I'll give you guys a quick rundown of public comment. Basically, you have three minutes to speak, five minutes if you're a group, but if you're speaking on behalf of a group, you have to be recognized by the group, and the group forfeits the time to speak on behalf of themselves. Yes, everybody to be courteous when speaking. This applies not just to our residents are here as, you know, as guests in the meeting, but also to mayor and council. When you, if you're in the chat, please put your name and last name, your block and street number as an example, forty-third hundred block of thirty-fourth Street. All right, we ask you to be courteous and tell and avoid personal attacks. If you wish, lots of complaints regarding a performance of employee, please bring your concerns to the city manager who runs our day-to-day and who is responsible for the staff. And same thing comes when it, when it comes to any other departments. All right, and we are gonna open up, if you're in the chat, name, last name, block and street number. Okay? And Jared, in the meantime, is there any feedback on Facebook? Thank you, Jared. All right, and I see nothing on the chat, so we're gonna move on. I'm closing public comments. And as a reminder, you don't have to put your comment on there unless you wish, and do write, like, do you need me to read it? So that way I know, okay? If not, it's just there. Okay, moving on to the closed session summary. Anytime we have a closed session, our vice mayor reads the summary. So this is what Luke, you know, as mayor would do. We had a closed session on Tuesday, December fifth. And he'll read it into record. Go ahead, Luke.
Okay, we wanted to close summary on December fifth, twenty twenty-three at nine thirty-five PM. It was a virtual. We were closed under the general provisions, Article Section three, three oh five, B one and seven. Those who voted to go into closed session were Mayor Benitez, council members Chesick, Stoltz, Fulls, Carter, and Woodall. It was the, and we were all in attendance as well. The same members were in attendance. And it was a unanimous vote. The actions taken were to discuss the appointment of employment assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation removal, resident Compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees or officials. Over whom this public body has jurisdiction or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. And to consult with council to obtain legal advice. Um, the topics discussed were the same.
Okay.
I think that's it.
All right, so just to clarify, option one was the one that Luke read, which is like the discipline of employee promotion and everything else. And option number seven was consult legal advice, all right? And this puts us um, right on schedule. Which basically means that every time we've had a closed session, um, immediately after we have uh, read it into record. So there's no backtrack on, on our log when it comes to closed sessions as well. So thank you, um. Look for making sure that as vice mayor, you have follow-up with that and I know Jared was also very good prior to that. All right, so thank you both. Moving on to business, second reading adoption ordinance number O eight, twenty twenty-three, amending chapter thirteen. Traffic of Mount Rainier code to alter certain speeds limits on city roads. The mayor council will have a second reading and adoption ordinance O three, twenty twenty-three, amending chapter twenty-three, traffic of Mount Rainier code to alter certain speed limits on city roads. And this is up for a vote tonight. Can you put it on? So just as a, uh, don't go all the way up, Melissa. Just as the point of information, it was introduced and read on December nineteenth. Um. And well, it says adopted in January twenty-two four post, posted on December twenty twenty-two three. So it gives you more, most of the days, so when it was posted, it was read and when it was um, introduced as well. So today's gonna be the second reading and vote. And effective days on it, so just to summarize it very quickly. And I have the readers, like, it's reducing city street speed limit from twenty-five to um, twenty miles per hour. So that's what we're asked the first one, it says, this is, you know, um. Luke, you wanna go ahead and read through it so that way we could have it in record that was read twice, but the overall is that reducing the city. Streets from twenty-five to twenty and it applies to city. Um, city streets, not uh, county or state, and that's for one in Route five hundred. All right, go ahead, Luke.
Yep, um, this is ordinance number zero eight, twenty twenty-three, amending chapter thirteen, traffic of the Mount Rainier code to alter certain speed limits on city roads. Whereas Maryland Transportation Code and annotated section twenty-five, one oh two, eight ten allows the local authorities such as the city of Mount Rainier and the reasonable exercise of its police power to alter speed limits for highways under its jurisdiction in accordance with title twenty-one, section twenty-one, eight oh three. And whereas based on its investigation of traffic conditions in the city, the city council has determined that conditions dangerous to vehicles and pedestrians exist on many city streets where the current speed limit is twenty-five miles per hour. To impart to a reduction of the speed limits in the district of Columbia on roads that pass into the city. In part to increasing traffic as area development intensifies and in part to other sociological and other factors. And whereas based upon the investigation, the city council has determined that a reasonable and safe maximum speed on these roads is twenty mile per hour. And whereas the roads in question are located in an urban district. I E. Areas that includes a street and are built up with structures that are devoted to business, industry or dwelling houses. That are situable at intervals of less than one hundred feet for a distance of at least one quarter mile. And whereas the city council has adopted resolution number zero one, twenty twenty-three, creating the Safe Streets Task Force and directing the creation of a vision, vision zero, Safe Street Plans. Committing the city to make efforts to improve conditions on the roads within its jurisdiction in order to reduce accidents, injuries and fatalities to persons using the roads. And whereas the city council adopted ordinance number zero seven, twenty twenty-three. Lowering the speed limits on certain roads within the city, but that ordinance contain an error relating to the town. Town's post-adoption procedures and the city council therefore by this ordinance intends to repeal and reenact the provision in question. Section one, now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Mount Rainier. At chapter thirteen, traffic with the Mount Rainier code be and hereby is amended to add section thirteen, one fourteen, speed limits to read as follows. Section thirteen, one fourteen, speed limits, the maximum speed limit on all city roads having a posted limit of twenty-five miles per hour on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Shall be twenty miles per hour beginning on February first, twenty twenty-four. Be appropriate signs shall be posted giving notice of the twenty mile per hour speed limit. Section two, this ordinance shall supersede ordinance number zero seven, twenty twenty-three, which is hereby repealed in its entirety. Section three, this ordinance is adopted by the council of the city of Mount Rainier this day. Of uh, the second of January, twenty twenty-four, and she'll take effect. On the um, first of February, twenty twenty-four, provided that a fair summary has been read at the meeting at which. It is introduced and at the meeting at which it has been acted upon, that a copy should be posted at city hall immediately after introduction. Until it is acted upon and for at least two weeks after it becomes effective. And then a fair summary is published at least once in a newspaper having general circulation in the city. Inclusive of the city's newsletter mailed or otherwise delivered to every city household.
Um, put it all the way to the bottom, Melissa. Yep, a little bit higher. So that way, and that, okay, so that's just a signature line. All right, council, we have. Discuss this, um. Ordinance O seven and O eight endlessly. So I'm gonna go around. And ask if you guys have a question. Actually, I'm gonna call for the question for you guys to be able to, and then we'll open up for discussion. All right, so I'll move to approve ordinance uh, number O two dash twenty twenty-three. Can I have a second?
Second.
Let's probably move in second. I'm gonna open up for discussion right now. If you have nothing to say, just skip it and let it go, okay? Uh, Luke, your mic is open. I'm gonna with you followed by Jared.
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Good, Jared.
Uh, nothing to add.
All right, Danielle.
Nothing to add.
Valerie.
Thank you for your work on this, everyone.
All right, perfect. All right, so any abstentions? Objections, hearing none. Um, ordinance O eight, twenty twenty-three, um, has passed unanimously. All right, and the next steps will follow. Um, it becomes in effect on February. And uh, Public Works team is gonna start working, they haven't already done so. I know the signs um, we're ordering that arriving or to put them out. Uh, there is, as, there is um, a grace period, but at the end of days, like, you know. Need to make sure it's responsible for following the new rules, all right? And our communication team is gonna put information out as well. All right, all right, thank you. Moving on to the next item. It's not their new business, but we do this every year, okay? Arbor Day proclamation, Mayor Benitez, and in this case vice, vice mayor Luke Chesick. Uh, will read the proclamation. I'm presenting it for Arbor Day, Friday, April twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, as you guys are aware, um. We do apply for this, um, for um, for Tree City USA. And application is due, so our job and thank you, um, director, Iroseal, uh, Latorre for making sure we follow through. Is that we sign everything, a proclamation is stressed, so wanted to make sure it's read into um. Into record, so that when she submits the application, it showcase not just the proclamation, but it was also read into record, okay? So um, Luke, um, can you go ahead and give it a read of the official proclamation?
Sure, um, this is the official proclamation, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday. But the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas. Trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water. Cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air. Producing life-giving oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource. Excuse me, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas. And beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, Selina, I Selina Benitez, mayor of the city of Mount Rainier, do hereby proclaim Friday, April twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. As Arbor Day in the city of Mount Rainier, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day. And to support efforts to protect our cities, our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this in future generations. Number twenty twenty-three. This is signature.
Thank you so much. And we go, I Selina, it's like, why you look a little different, Selina? Look a little taller. Um, all right, perfect, so um, there's no vote for. Like record, um, that we have it. And there's one more document that I'm gonna send by and sign. I once again for um, Tree City. It's a designation that we've had for. Some of the things that I told you that I wanna make sure that through, um. You know, being mayor is that not only that we followed through with some wonderful things that we've done as. Continuous, I know the city manager, when he was a. He was in charge of making sure we follow up with this as well, then our tree and green commissions are also wonderful to us. Right, but also make sure that there's any designation that we have lost, we get it back and I think we've done a good job of doing that as well. All right, so it's in the record and um, as it gets closer, um, I'm pretty sure the tree commission. Um, they usually have like tree planning events or like seminars or information, so. Um, I guess this is a good, good way to inform um, everybody that this is coming, all right? Okay, so. Thank you guys so much. And thank you, Luke, for, 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 for. I'm moving on to item number nine, bonus approval of minutes. In the minutes, um, I know Luke read through them and this is like September fifteen. In September nineteen, twenty twenty work sessions, both of them, October six. Twenty twenty legislative meeting, October twenty, twenty twenty work session. November ten, twenty twenty legislative meeting, November seventeen, twenty twenty work session. November twenty-four, twenty twenty work session, December first legislative meeting of twenty twenty. December eight, twenty twenty special work session. December fifteen, twenty twenty work session, September nineteen, twenty twenty-three work session. October third, twenty twenty-three legislative meeting, October seventeen, twenty twenty-third work session in November twenty-first. Twenty twenty-three work session and. I wanna definitely say thank you to Melissa and her team for making sure that we have touch up with all of our minutes. What you're gonna be seeing moving forward is gonna be the twenty-four um. Minutes um, coming through, but we have been able to. Um, now we, they have been able to. Um, write down the minutes for past meetings. Um, in order for us to be in um, full compliance and on track as well. So Melissa, uh, thank you so much for your hard work. Um, you know, it's not easy to listen to the meetings once. And twice uh, to, to work on the minutes as well and, and everybody that's worked on it. Thank you for that. All right, so putting a motion to like approve the minutes as originally presented. Can I have a second?
As originally presented before any modifications were made by any council members.
Okay, thank you so much. Any discussion? Any objections, abstentions, hearing none? The minutes have been approved. Uh, thank you guys so much. All right. Moving on to item. When, can I have a motion on the floor to adjourn?
So moved.
It's probably moved, I'll second it because you guys are taking too long to adjourn. Um, any discussion, objection, and stents, just hearing none. The meeting has come to an end at seven thirty-eight and again, uh, thank you to our whole entire team for taking us through the year and know they've been working hard to get us ready for this year. To our wonderful committee members, I know you guys have worked really, really hard and to our volunteers for. All the work they did within the baskets uh, for Thanksgiving and the holidays and the whole entire staff. It was. A lot of work, couple of us including myself, were recuperating ourselves from the holiday baskets. But a big shout out goes to the Mount Rainier PTO and the Tombstone PTO. They had massive amounts of events, very well, um. Attended, my radio mentor had over four hundred people attending their event. Um, and it was, it's always great to collaborate between the churches, the religious services and our PTOs, um. Big thank you to all of you guys and we look forward to a wonderful year. So staff, thank you so much for um. Making sure this meeting happened, although it was like a holiday yesterday, you guys got everything ready right away for us. And to our community members, thank you guys so much as well. So. Have a good night, team, and um, we'll see you guys in about two weeks and. You know, I'll do my best to start working hard to represent us and I know a couple of us are doing a great job as well. All right, good night, bye everyone.
Thank you guys.
Yes.
Thanks, team.